We'll call the meeting of the Frankfurt-Franklin County Planning Commission to order. This is the July 9 meeting of the commission, and we'll ask the Secretary to call the robe, please.
Kate Bennett, David Boggs, Patty Cross, Joyce Honaker, Keith Lee, Timothy Lusher, Jim Nichol, Charles Stewart, James Terrell, Russell Wright, Sharon Jackson, Corbin Vane.
Minutes from the March 12, 2019 meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion for a brief minutes.
Move properly second. Questions on the motion? Questions on the motion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Motion carries. I forgot to ask, do we have anyone participating electronically?
No.
Okay. Then we can motor on. Payment of bills?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lee. David, did you do that?
No, but I will. I make the motion we pay the bills.
They're second. Got a second. Move them properly second that we pay the bills. Questions? Questions? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Reports of officers? Reports of standing committees? Reports of special select committees? Special orders? I have none. Okay, staff items?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question on two. This might not be the correct time, but as far as the comprehensive plan, is that now being moved or is anything leaked right now? We're under the same guidance of what the due dates and stuff of that nature?
Are they comprehensive?
Yes, yes, sir. I don't know if this is the right time, Mr. Chairman, but I've had that in.
It's as good a time as any.
Okay, thank you.
So, and that's a topic we'll need to try to revisit and begin whatever process we're going to do and whether that involves trying to find funding from the city or county for a consultant or starting with creation of our own committees. But, I mean, we are, we're about a year away from the date that we really need to be hitting, there would be that five-year mark from the last adopted comp plan, so.
So, is, in your opinion, right now, we're okay?
We're okay, we're good.
We're okay? That was my question.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
And, Mr. Lee, I would suggest that as soon as Mr. Russell and company and the governor clear us for in-person meetings so that conversations can take place, that we'll begin to have committee conversations around the comprehensive plan. But you should, everyone should remember that the last 60 days, there have been some conversations from the public arena with regard to development of the comprehensive plan, what topics ought to be dealt with during the comprehensive plan development, and even to the extent of, you should have gotten a letter this week that talks about the planning commission's process for making determinations or decisions about zone changes, development plans, and the like. So, there's plenty of meat to be put on the bone and discussed. Our process, as it currently exists, is designed to accommodate those things, including having a consultant as well as the work groups around which everyone within the community is invited to attend and put their ideas and et cetera on the table. So, being able to accommodate those things, I think we're already set to be able to do, but just being able to be in a position to have in-person meetings and et cetera, to be able to have those conversations, I think is what would be delaying what we're doing at this point in time. Hopefully, August will give us more opportunities than what we can see immediately. Anything else we need to deal with? If not, we'll go to new business, and we'll ask the Secretary to call item number one, please.
In accordance with Articles 5, 8, and 13 of the Frankfurt zoning ordinance, Brian C. Hicks, on behalf of Ollies and Limestone Center Investments LLC, is requesting approval of an amended signed package plan for the property located at 202 Limestone Drive. The property is more particularly described as PVA map number 050-00-00-02-0.01.
All right. Jordan Miller, City Frankfurt Planning Department. A couple of weeks ago, we received a signed permit for a new tenant at Limestone Center. At the time, we could not approve it, so therefore, it comes for you all tonight. The property is located within a planned unit development, zone plan commercial. We've been working with the applicant to reduce the size of the sign that was initially proposed. It was considerably larger, but we have kind of been able to walk it back and got to where we are now, 116.69 square feet. Staff feels that it is appropriate and within similar approvals that the planning commission has made recently, and also on that site, there is an existing sign that is significantly smaller than what it is allotted. So, staff, we're recommending approval with four conditions on page three of your staff report. I'd like to submit that to the record. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you. They're also installing a pylon sign panel that is available to be permitted by staff, so you all will be considering the facial sign tonight.
Commission members, questions for Mr. Miller? If not, I have a question, please. Now, is the signed package being requested by Ollies or is it being requested by the owner of the center?
It's being requested by Ollies, the tenant.
So, it's an individual business request?
Yes, sir.
As opposed to, okay?
Yes, sir.
That was my only question. Well, does the applicant have a question of Mr. Miller? Okay. Would the applicant please come forward and make his presentation?
Brian Hicks, on behalf of Ollies and Limestone Center Investments. As Jordan pointed out, we initially began with a approximately 200-square-foot sign, and as the commission knows, the standard is one-to-one per linear foot of facade on the street-facing side, so we were well over that with a 94-foot, I believe, distance there. And we have worked with the sign company and Ollies to parse that down to what was then ultimately accepted by the staff at 116-plus feet. I agree with staff's report and available for questions.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, I've got a question about, there's four conditions on page three of the figure. Can you find with all four conditions?
Yes.
That's my question. Thank you.
Any other commission member with a question?
I actually do have a question. Um, our report says that this sign would be over where the new doors are.
That's correct.
But then there's also sketches and not having where the banner is hanging. Is that also going to be part of Ollies and the thing back?
The new doors are over to the left of what was Elder Beerman. The sign will be over that.
So, it's not going to be where they're coming back in, if it's over there?
No.
Okay.
No.
Mr. Hicks, if you'll hold the spot for just a moment, I have a question of my legal counsel that might require your input, if he says yes. Mr. Logan, Limestone Center Investments LLC is the owner of the shopping center, and this application, which is separate and distinct from application number two, which is on our agenda, but Limestone Center is in violation of the ordinances of this planning commission. And since Ollies is a tenant in Limestone Center's facility, is the planning commission permitted to bleed or to incorporate any of the second item into the first in terms of the landscaping? Since the landscaping serves Ollies, just as it would, any other tenant in that center?
The landscaping and the sign are two separate and distinct categories.
Yes.
If we believe that the landscaping is inappropriate, then there needs to be an enforcement action for that. We should not be holding up a tenant's request for a sign based upon a landlord's failure to do landscaping.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Hicks. You may be relieved.
Thank you.
Chair, entertain the motion with regard to the request by Ollies?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'll make the recognition that we approve the signed package plan requested for the property, for Ollies at 202 Limestone Drive with the four conditions outlined on page three of the report.
Move them properly second. Are there questions on the motion? Questions on the motion? Seeing none, hearing none, would you call the robe, Madam Secretary?
Yes. Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Madam Secretary, would you call item number two, please?
Yes. And according to the Articles 5, 7, and 8 of the Frankfurt zoning ordinance, Prism Engineering and Design Group LLC, on behalf of Limestone Center Investments LLC, is requesting approval of an amended landscape plan for the property located at 202 Limestone Drive. The property is more particularly described as PVA map number 050-00-00-02-0.01.
Evening, Commission. Eric Cockley, Director, City of Frankfurt, Planning and Community Development. As Vicki mentioned, this is a request for an approval of an amended landscape plan. For a little background on how we arrived here today, on the afternoon of Friday, May 8, staff was alerted that there was a tree service removing otherwise required landscape trees from Limestone Center. So, staff headed that way to check out what was going on. By the time I arrived, they had removed all of the required trees and the whole interior of the parking lot in that front area between the parking lot and the road. So, after that, got ahold of the applicant, their engineer and counsel, and let them know that we were going to have to come to a solution on this. Also, shared with them that I'll touch on briefly some of the language within our landscape regs that deals with mitigation for the unpermitted removal of otherwise required landscaping, things of that nature. So, at that time, started working with the applicant's engineer on an amended plan for what we would be replacing this landscape material with. And I can go through, so the photo you're seeing now is a shot of the conditions prior to the removal. This is from 2019. And then you'll see, that's the day I showed up, and the landscape islands, the trees have been removed. There's where some of the tree trunks are still, haven't been removed from the site. So, it's a fairly mature trees in the area that have been there for quite some time, probably since they were landscaped when it was developed as a Walmart originally. So, we've reviewed their proposed landscape plan. They meet all of the required screening and landscape requirements in the regulations. In addition, in an attempt to mitigate the loss of those mature trees, we have required them, and they've agreed, rather than go with a one-inch or even one-and-a-half-inch caliper, that all the trees will be minimum two-inch caliper. Just to, and I mentioned this in my staff report, the, some of the language in our tree preservation section of the zoning ordinance references, once again, this is a planned district, so the development plan will come to you anyways, but it does require that the planning commission would review the original plan and that the planning commission may require additional trees or larger D V H trees at time of planting, hence the discussion I have with the applicant about a larger caliper, and discuss that with a local arborist that the city regularly uses for things to make sure that we could go to a big enough size that would still at least be available at local nurseries, because I know as much as you'd love to try to replace them with what was there, that may just simply not be possible. And the tree preservation language, and you all may be familiar with this, and I touched on it in the report, just to make sure the commission was aware that there is some precedent when otherwise required trees have been removed from a site that had recently had a development plan approved and those trees placed within a tree preservation area, that the commission approved an amended landscape plan, and per the language in that section, did issue fines as part of the mitigation. Now, I'll defer to counsel. That references specifically trees located in tree preservation areas, the trees we are discussing, while being required landscaping and required trees per the development plan, were not specifically denoted as being in tree preservation areas. So, I'm not sure whether that applies, but I felt that it was apropos to share that with the commission and remind them of that previous action. We can go through, if you've got any other questions, but just to touch on a couple specifics that I thought we're used to bringing up for yourselves in the public. The amended landscape plan, as proposed, does meet our standards. The tree count of the ones that were removed immediately in May, plus other ones that I noticed appeared to be missing from interior landscape islands and such, where there, I can only assume were previously trees located, were 50 trees. The original Walmart development plan that I pulled up had 77 trees required at that time. The proposed plan is including both 70 new trees, the commitment to remain and preserve 27 additional trees beyond that, for a total production of 97 trees on-site, which is more than we had before. Of course, as I mentioned, they're not mature like the ones that we have removed. I've measured the diameter of the stumps for all of the trees that were removed. They varied in size from 11 inches in diameter to the largest was about 34 inches, widely varying within that range. And as I mentioned before, the proposed minimum caliper of all the replacement trees is two inches. I've recommended approval on the plan, and we'll leave the rest to you all, and happy to answer any questions.
Questions by commissioners?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious if they gave any particular reasons why they removed the trees that were already there, knowing that they were probably in violation?
I would defer to the applicant's counsel to answer that question. I will say I've not, well, I'll defer to counsel.
So, where are these 27 additional trees that we're supposed to be preserving in this new landscape?
I suspect some of them may be around the back. There's a rear section that they've now labeled with some areas with tree preservation areas on them, and they actually weren't part of the original required landscaping, so that's another kind of bonus, if you will. They're proposing to do a little bit of cleaning up of the undergrowth and the otherwise, not to call it junk, but some of the other landscape material that's just kind of back there, but to keep all of those, you know, reasonable trees. There's also some that they did not remove. If you're looking at the building to the left, there's that side rear parking area, and there were a series of trees along Limestone Drive there. Those have not been removed, with the exception of one in the rear. I think the combination of those is probably what makes up those 27.
Okay. From the staff perspective, and I think it's a great idea to preserve the trees in the rear of the building, but how does that mitigate or supplement what was in the front of the building, what the public would see, what?
So, I think.
How does that become a fair exchange?
So, I think to your point, that's a, and that's a fair point. That doesn't necessarily improve the view shed that the public and the motoring public will have of the property. You know, the only benefit, I guess, would be that we ensure that they remain and they're replaced if they ever die for purposes of, you know, water quality, air quality, all those good things that trees do, which is why we want them around, other than they look pretty. Beyond that, I think it's a fair statement to say, well, we appreciate that, but I, I mean, I don't disagree with your point that that doesn't change necessarily the public's experience of the property.
Mr. Cockley, one question, though.
Go ahead.
Following up on Mr. Jack, all the additional trees they're putting in, so there are in addition of what they've taken out, those will all be front-facing? Were those better? I've got the landscaping map, but does that more than make up for the trees that are being removed, is my question?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it more than makes up for the trees that were there when they removed them, and they'll be replaced. I'll also mention that a series, most of the, all of the interior trees, the ones that were left, and this also explains why many of them weren't left, were originally on the development plan that Walmart approved, were Bradford pears, which we, of course, wouldn't accept today, and that's what, this is a good example of why, because many of them, I would assume, had died and then been removed over the years and just simply hadn't been replaced. So, one of the silver linings on the situation is that we get to replace those landscape islands with a more appropriate tree that will live longer theoretically and do better and be an actual acceptable species for where it is, a topic of which I did discuss, and I think I mentioned this in the staff report, with the arborist, we went over the species. Some of them were explicitly permitted in our species list, some of them weren't in the list, so we went over those to make sure that he deemed them appropriate for their use and location, and he thought they were all acceptable species for how they were being used.
Well, I guess that raises a different question. Isn't there a process and a procedure in place that if a developer who has an approved development plan want to make modifications to that development plan, isn't there a procedure in place that instructs the developer on how to do that?
Sure. They would essentially do what we're doing now, which is come to staff, say, hey, we'd like to make some changes, whether that's to the structure, development of the site, or the landscaping, and we would process an amended plan, including whatever those changes were, and in this case, because it's a planned district, we would bring that to the commission for final approval.
And when Walmart was constructed at that site, was the landscape plan items the same as it is today, or was it a different landscape plan, set of trees and shrubbery and bushes and et cetera, that would have been allowed or permitted or recommended?
The, most of the.
Keeping in mind that what you just said was, many of those trees that were clear-cut did not meet the requirements of the landscape plan as we have it today?
Yes, some of them, specifically the ones within interior landscape islands. I believe, from what the arborist told me, the ones that were cut within like the front landscape area were pin oats, if I recall correctly. So, the proposed landscaping is largely in the same locations, generally speaking, those same screening locations we would typically put landscaping, but it is different, and I think involves the, just a different design in terms of the spacing and the shrubs. I don't know, I have to check the plan again, but I don't believe at that time the screening requirements were the same as they are now in terms of some of the other plantings in addition to the trees. And they've, so, same locations, but I think there's probably, and I would also defer to the applicant's engineer, I think there's probably additional material that wouldn't have been on that plan.
So, you would think that there were materials that were excluded from the landscaping materials as we would see it now, some that were excluded, some that would have been added because we know more about landscaping now than we did 15, 20, 25 years ago?
I think there are.
I mean, I guess that's my point, that 25 years ago, landscaping materials that were permitted have been changed.
Correct.
From then to a different set of materials now, and I guess I'm questioning whether the clear-cutting of landscape materials without the proper procedure, just because one would think the landscape material doesn't meet the permitted requirements of today, was a good idea, without coming for the proper procedurally permitted process? Are you agreeing that that was a?
Was that a question?
Yes, that was a question at the end of it.
I, I believe the answer is.
It began with, do you think?
No, I do not believe that removal of them, regardless of what they were, whether we would permit that material today, I don't believe that was the proper way to do that. The proper way to do that would have been to consult with staff and begin reviewing an amended landscape plan, then bring it to you, and then subsequent to whatever was approved to be removed, replaced, amended, what have you, you would then go do the work. approved to be removed, replaced, amended, what have you, you would then go do the work.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cockley, is the current landscape regulations that we have in place more or less stringent than those that were in place from Walmart?
I can't comment specifically what were in the regulations at that time, but based upon the product of this plan and the regulations we have now versus what apparently was required on the development plan that I reviewed, I believe our regulations now are requiring additional material and are more stringent about what that material is than what I can only assume must have been at the time.
All right. Now, irrespective of whether they requested it or not, is the change that they have come up with inconformative with our current regulations?
Yes.
In your opinion, is that better or worse than if we had left the trees there in the first place?
I think the overall product of the landscaping will be an improvement from what was there before, and obviously replacing the remaining Bradford pears is an improvement. I would only qualify that by saying that the removal of those large mature trees in the front, that I have no knowledge of, being diseased or dying in any way, assuming they were healthy trees, I think that's, that's obviously something we wouldn't want to do.
I'm sorry, I asked more than just a couple of questions.
Mr. Lee, counsel, you are entitled to ask as many questions as you believe is necessary to clarify whatever situation is there.
I hope I clarify correctly.
Okay, are there any other questions by any other commissioner of, Eric? Does the applicant have questions, staff?
We have no questions, Mr. Cockley, thank you.
Right. Thank you, Eric. And then we'll ask the applicant to please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Ayer, attorney-at-law, representing Limestone Center LLC. There's nothing that I could stand here and say tonight that will justify what happened on May 8th of 2020. I first became aware of what was going on based on a posting on a social media site, and I immediately contacted my clients and told them what was going on. They were aware that a subcontractor was there removing certain trees that were in the process of dying. In fact, I even have some pictures here of some of those trees even prior to the time that they purchased the property that shows that they were dying. In fact, one of the pictures that Mr. Cockley posted early on showed some of the trees that were dying. That does not excuse and was not the intent of the developers when the subcontractor took to the property that day. And obviously, once they heard that, there was great distress. I think it's safe to say, based on what you heard from Mr. Cockley, based on what has gone on since then, that this developer is sincerely apologetic for what happened. However, they believe, as Mr. Cockley indicated in answer to Mr. Logan's question, that the product that you're going to see on that site, beginning with the approval of this plan, will be a better product than was there as of May 8th, 2020. That's no excuse for what happened, but they believe that you're going to see a better plan. Having said that, the applicant agrees with the report of the staff, and I and other members from the applicant are here to answer any questions you may want to ask.
Commissioners, commissioners have questions of Mr. Ayer? Well, Mr. Ayer, you're almost off.
Not quite, sir. Not quite. I've been around here before, Mr. Jackson.
Well, I really believe I have several innocuous group questions that I don't think will cause you any difficulty at all. One, staff indicated that there had been conversations or discussions about the caliper of the trees that would be installed to replace those that were cut, moving from one-inch to a two-inch minimum. Do you have any idea how tall those trees might be?
I do not, but... I'll let the engineer speak to that.
Jason Hall, Prism Engineering. We would estimate eight to 10 feet on a two-inch caliper tree.
Okay. And I'm thinking, the reason I ask that question is that I'm thinking that one of the benefits of trees that were there, whether they were Bradford pear or some other tree, was that it provided for individuals who shopped in the center at some point a little bit of shade, keeping the vehicle from getting too hot and that kind of thing, which raises a question for me that since we cut off, cut out those trees that were a little bit taller and provided shade at points in time, would it be more appropriate to say, increase that caliber so that you get more height, maybe 15 feet or whatever, that would do the same thing? It's a question.
I think with the inch, inch and a half, two-inch caliper trees that's commonly available, when you get to a larger, two-and-a-half, three-inch caliper, then it becomes an issue on availability in the area.
But would that be a good goal for the owner, developer, to stretch for as opposed to that minimum two-inch?
And keep in mind, the two-inch measurement is at breast height, so I know in Mr. Cockley's presentation, it was right there, 11 to 34 inches. If you measure the stump at the ground level, you know, it comes in considerably. So a two-inch at breast height, you may be looking at a, you know, three to four inch, you know, at the base of the tree itself. So, you know, it's a, it's a fairly substantial tree at two-inch, just because the caliper is measured at breast height. About four feet typically is the standard. So I think two inches, while it sounds small in comparison to the 11 to 34 inch, it is a fairly substantial tree as it is, and, you know, within, you know, four to five years, you know, it's going to have quite a bit of growth on it and provide quite a bit of shade. Now, arguably not, not what was there, but, you know, substantial increase from what it will be when, once it's planted.
Okay. You want my next one, or you want Mr. Ayer to...
I think I'll defer to Mr. Ayer. Thank you very much.
To field my next one. Mr. Ayer, what timeline are you looking at to put this new landscaping in?
Jason, he's asking about timeline, once, if this were approved tonight, when would we have been putting in the new, the new landscaping? Is that a fair...
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I shouldn't, shouldn't have stepped away. With the, with the current weather situation, you know, we would be looking at the fall for installation, just because anything right now, it just wouldn't survive.
Okay. Well, don't walk away yet.
Okay.
The agenda item indicates that while this request is for Limestone Center Investment, it appears to be to accommodate a development plan for the construction of a bank at that property. Is that accurate?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
Well, in the subject line of my agenda item, it says, "In accordance with Section
8.30 requirements for a planned commercial district, Limestone Center Investment LLC is requesting approval of a development plan for the construction of a bank on the property located at 200 Limestone Drive."
Is that just on the agenda?
It's on the subject line of the agenda.
Page one.
And if, if, if that is the case, then the land, the landscaping affects the bank and its construction.
I think that's a typo on, on the report and/or the agenda from a previous item that was before you in 2019.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I think the subject line didn't get changed, but the actual request...
So the bank is not involved in it at all?
Not at all.
Okay. So make note of that, please, Madam Secretary. So my next, my other question is inappropriate, Mr. Ayer.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Uh, Mr. Lee?
Mr. Ayer, this group also owns Franklin Square, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, that's, I just wanted to double check, that's my question, thank you.
Are there other questions by commissioners, Mr. Ayer? Staff have a question, Mr. Ayer? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chair, let entertain a motion with regard to the request.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a comment first. Even the property zones, Franklin Square, I think it's well, well-kept of, it's a very good property, it's been a property in the stamp for a long time. I'm extremely happy that something's getting put in here. I'm not happy about the trees putting down, but it looks like the development plan is better than what we possibly had before. So therefore, I'm, I'd like to recommend approval of the applicant's request for the amended landscape plan at 200 Limestone Drive.
Move property second, if there is any discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, hearing none, all is, Madam Secretary, call the row, please.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart? Sorry. Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you, Mr. Ayer. Chair, let entertain a motion for a chairman.
A motion?
Second.
Move property second, non-defeatable. Thank you all for attending.